To order the East Point Community School Board, Board of Education meeting. Please call the roll.
Dr. Early.
Here.
Mr. Williams here, Mr. Roscoe.
Present.
Mrs. Richardson.
Present.
Mrs. Chopa.
Here.
Mrs. Whitby.
Here.
And Mr. McCain.
Here.
All right, can you please have the present allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Can I please have an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Okay, with approval and support, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Whitby?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopa?
Yes.
And Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Thank you. With a vote of seven zero, motion is carried. Can I please have an approval of the consent agenda?
Please forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as written form.
Support.
Okay, with a motion of support, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes, Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopa?
Yes.
And Mrs. Whitby?
Yes.
Okay, with a vote of seven zero, motion carried. Next, we have superintendent's report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education. For those of you joining us in the audience here and those of you joining us remotely, this evening superintendent report is going to be a little bit of some follow-ups this evening for the Board of Education. I'm going to invite the members of the executive team to participate in this interactive superintendent's report for this evening. So again, I want to remind you that we are East Point Community Schools and we are focused on empowering, caring, and succeeding as an organization. So throughout the district today, we had professional development across the district. It included nonviolent crisis prevention, our CPI, training, curriculum, data-driven instruction, and more. I got a chance to pop into a few sessions today and I was pleasantly pleased at the high school to see our teachers leading their own PD today and engaging in great discourse and dialogue about the mindset of data-driven instruction. So congratulations and thank you to all of our staff for the learning today. Elementary curriculum nights, all four of our elementary schools hosted back-to-school curriculum events last week, giving families a chance to meet staff and check out the classrooms. We had great participation in all four of our elementary schools. We've got a new teacher to the ranks, Ms. Megan Mertz, and she brought a lesson to Ms. Anjum's Resource Room Chemistry class. And this is an example of how instructional coaching is job embedded in our district. So as a teacher here at East Point Community Schools, you have the support of instructional coaches. And our instructional coaches don't just come in and teach or work with the teacher, they stay in the classroom. And it's side-by-side, elbow-to-elbow work. And this is a great example of one of our new instructional coaches working with a Resource Room Chemistry class. Art classes, Mr. Dislovers' seventh-grade art students at East Point Middle School are working to reimagine a collaborative sketch that they made in groups. They're doing not only an art project that will impact East Point Middle School, but having to collaborate with their peers as well. And Mr. Dislover is a great teacher, new staff member to East Point Middle School, doing some amazing work with its students. So we're very happy with Tobias and East Point Middle School's start to this school year. We've got a lot going on in Shamrock Athletics, but the most important thing, although you can't coach the Lions, we could get you, helping on the field with Shamrock's first home football game is this Friday night versus Sterling Heights. I'd like to invite the board and everybody to come on out and support your Shamrocks. We also have volleyball, JV and varsity at South Lake tomorrow night, at Clinton Dale on Wednesday, and away on Friday night. This past weekend, we also had teams of cross-country runners participate in the MAC jamboree, which was great, not to just have a runner, but to have teams. And Paris McCarthy will talk more about that at her update. For the community and for this organization, there is still no state budget. I'd like to thank all of you for your advocacy efforts. You approved a resolution, yep, thank you guys, stating what predicament our lawmakers are putting us in. I'd like to encourage the community to please reach out to your local lawmaker. If you don't live here in East Point and you live someplace else, please connect with your lawmakers. It's unacceptable to be approaching the October 1st deadline and not have a state budget for schools. East Point, I have confirmed with Assistant Super Finance and Operations, we do have money in the bank to support operations. So I'll invite Mr. John Dean, Dr. John Dean, to chime in here. John was asked to go ahead and check our cash and Mr. Dean, Dr. Dean, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Appreciate it. Yes, we did a quick review as we always do because we're always focused on the budget in general, but then we have to figure out what cash do we have in the bank. Think of that just like the money in your checking account. So we're always analyzing that. We, as a district, are sitting at right around $12.5 million in our checking account, which is a good position to be in. Our monthly bills, now it depends on the month because some bills you pay once a year, some bills you pay like payroll every twice a month, if that makes some sense. But our monthly bills are approximately three to three and a half million dollars a month, so we are well-positioned. Having said that, that doesn't take anything away from what the superintendent was saying. It is irresponsible that we don't have a budget yet because as much as we're fortunate through good financial planning to have money in the bank, that doesn't mean that we don't need the revenue to support our kids. And without a state budget, we're going to have to continue to make some hard decisions. Short answer, we're well-positioned through good financial planning. Long answer, we need the legislature to step up.
Absolutely. So any other efforts by any members participating tonight, reaching out to your lawmakers would be great timing. We are rightsizing some allocations across the district. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, but we are attempting to be fiscally responsible and where we have a high teacher ratio to students, we are making some adjustments. We have determined as a team that we will continue free lunch beginning October 1st, irregardless of what the state does. We are committed to the service and feeding our children. So we don't want parents to be worried about how they're going to feed their kids here at school because our state can't put a budget out. Our executive team has made the commitment that we will continue with free lunches after October 1st. And there is a lot of talk about a possible state shutdown coming our direction. We are poised to continue operations and to continue our payroll. And a big thanks to John Dean and the Fiscal Department for ensuring and communicating that we are prepared to meet payroll and to continue. K-5 transition update, a big thanks to all of our staff and families through this transition update. I think our team did a good job of navigating, rezoning our four elementary schools. We are currently adjusting allocations. We did have one building come in a little shorter than we anticipated, but the good thing is we had two buildings we didn't anticipate that have increased enrollment demands. So we are looking at adding three FTEs to our elementary schools, possibly, or you know, again, still early. We have released two FTEs, one to Crescentwood and one to Bellevue. And we are rightsizing. Unfortunately, we did not have the GSRP enrollment to sustain all of our classrooms. So we did cut one GSRP section and we're moving some staff around. We're also closely looking at the Forest Park numbers as well. We plan for more students than have come to school. They are still coming in, so our team is going to take another look at those numbers tonight. Increased elementary schools transition, we've gotten some good feedback from our families about this transition, easing the burden on them as well. Another part of this transition update is that we are going to look at our elementary school mascots and our branding. And I'd like to applaud Caitlin Keenitz because she found a way to help engage children in having some input. Caitlin designed these coloring sheets, a different one for each elementary school. Surveys have gone out to the principals and parents are participating in and engaging with their school community about what they'd like to see for their mascot. And kids are too. I think the kids have already come up with more creative mascots than we adults can think of, but this will be an ongoing process with a big reveal in the new school year. So I really applaud the team. This came out of a committee of paraprofess teachers, principals from last year as we went into this K-5 transition. And the good ideas don't come from our team. I'm here to tell you, they come from these committees where we involve and lift voices. So they had this great idea and we're carrying it out. We are seeing some interesting things coming into our schools with the class of 2038 and our incoming kindergarten students. As you guys know, this is the birth year of our pandemic children. The children coming into our schools in kindergarten now were 2019, 2020 birth cohorts. We are seeing more needs in this kindergarten group than we have traditionally seen in entering kindergarten students. There is quite a bit more students that we're, our team's starting to identify as needing speech and language. We're seeing some self-regulation and executive functioning challenges. Toiletting independence in some areas is tough and also those social-emotional. So you know, having adults faces behind masks and not having kids socialize during those developmental years, we are seeing that in our incoming kindergarten class. And so the team is poised. I'm going to kind of kick it over to Stephanie Fleming, Assistant Super Curriculum Instruction and Student Supports, to talk a little bit more about the supports that we have in place for all of our elementary schools.
Yeah, thank you. So as Superintendent Gibson just relayed, we are seeing some challenges with students coming in and a lot of higher needs, but as always, our team is poised to respond and we keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on at the buildings. So in response to this, we've increased our number of paraprofessionals that are working in our elementary schools. We have a behavior technician at every single elementary school, which was something that we did actually start two years ago, but we have preserved that that resource out of a need from our principals. We have a board-certified behavior analyst, which is a BCBA. We have one allocation for that, but she does do her work across all four elementaries and she monitors those behavior technicians, helps to make behavior plans for individual students, both general ed and special education students. We have speech and language pathologists across the district, all with caseloads that are, you know, well within compliance and school psychologists, same. Special education social workers at every single building and we have at-risk social worker in every single building. So our at-risk social workers take on a caseload of approximately 50 students that are not special education students. So that's a really great resource to have. It kind of shares that web of support network that we want to see in our schools and helps kids increase their social-emotional support. We have teacher consultants assigned to every single building this year, which is a change from before. We were sharing TCs. TCs do assist in our special education departments across our district. And so they are a very, very big resource. That was a welcome increase across the district to share the load of the increased needs of students and the caseloads. And we also have an instructional coach in every single building. So like Christie stated, sorry, Superintendent Gibson stated, instructional coaches are not just, you know, people who help with lesson planning. They're actually partners in the work with our teachers in the classroom. So they go in, they observe, they model, they walk side-by-side with our teachers and help to improve instruction at scale. In addition to those things, we also have, at the secondary level, we actually have school counselors as well. And then we shift from behavior techs. We don't have those at the secondary level. We have restorative practice coordinators. So we work with McComb Resolution Center and we contract with restorative practice coordinators. That is, they do a lot of mediations, circles, try to help those conflict resolution skills with students and have that proactive approach with conflict and relationships. Our support for building principals and staff is also provided by our central office team. So we actually have a pretty robust central office team with various skilled people. We have a district director of special education. We have the district MTSS and homeless liaison. These individuals get phone calls all day, every day. They will drop everything and go to a building to assist principals and staff. So they are very, very great resources for staff members. District student support coordinator, we are actually, there is a posting for that currently. That is a position that we approved at the end of last year, but this will help layer in those supports for special education 504s, trainings of paraprofessionals and all of those needs that we identified through our review process last year. Our TyNot Liaison, school resource officer, who is housed at the high school but responds to our entire district. Our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and under her, she kind of has a network of MISD and consultants that she is able to both consult, I'm sorry, with and then send out to buildings upon request. So for instance, today we had professional development and she was able to align resources and send them out to where the buildings identified their needs were. And then myself, I work with all of the principals on a daily basis. We do weekly, I do weekly updates for them, send out information. I work with them in their buildings and we focus more on building systems, on instructional walkthroughs and on just those principal questions that you might have every single day. So I'm always available 24/7 to them as well.
Thank you so much for sharing a little bit of those. So not only is our team poised to meet the needs of the class of 2038, Stephanie has got the supervision of all of those services that support schools as well. So she and her team have done a fantastic job. Next up to the podium, I'd like to welcome Executive Director Dean Neforos of Human Resources. And this board has asked for an update on the state of our staffing. As you know, this is goal three of your strategic plan in building high-quality staff. And so Mr. Neforos is prepared and dug into all of the staff numbers and is here tonight to share a little bit more about the work that we've been doing to grow our teaching workforce and our service workforce. So Mr. Neforos.
Thank you. I was already warned by Ms. Fleming that I can't take an hour since we all want to get home for the Lions game tonight. So I'll keep this concise, but make sure.
Mr. Neforos, is your microphone on?
It is.
It's got the green button?
It is.
All right.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I'm rather tall, so I have probably more of a gap here, but I'll do my best. So if you can go to the first slide. A little bit about what we're going to share today in the presentation is just the agenda here, just how we tie this into our strategic plan. A little bit about our student and our community profile. Then I want to go through just four of our major groups, the ones that are more front-facing with our students and our families. And then just talk about some, at the end, some staffing and retention implications of how this all plays together. So if you can go to the next slide. First of all, as we know, our strategic plan, goal three, is very clear. We want to attract, hire, develop, and retain an exceptional workforce to ensure innovation, compassion, responsibility, and accountability. You know, within that concept of an exceptional workforce, of course, you know, we're looking for highly qualified staff. We want the best staff we can get here at East Point Community Schools for our students to make sure we, you know, drive student achievement and growth. So that exceptional probably has a broad range, a broad definition to it. Within that, and not really part of our goals, but it's probably an unwritten goal for most districts or all districts, you know, I've worked for three, that we always work to try to make sure the staff, as best as possible, reflects the community that we serve, both the students as well as the broader community. So if we can go to this, we'll just talk a little bit about each one of these. First of all, our ECS student profile. This comes directly from our Power School data and I pulled it out just for this school year. So it's very accurate data right now. And you can see how our student data breaks down in terms of our demographics of our students. About 75% are African-American and then about nine, a little over 9% are white and then multiracial is about 7.5% and then a small percentage for a few other ethnic identities. Now contrast this with our overall East Point profile, which is the next slide. This is just the broader community. So we operate obviously within this community. I know a little small part of Warren, but we primarily took East Point here. And you can see that overall demographic is just a little bit different. Now, I use both these for a reason. One is that we know we have a lot of students and families within this community who don't go to our schools. So we also want to make sure we meet the needs of everyone because we hope to be able to track these students back to our schools with the good things we're continuing to do and the continuing to build here. The demographic is a little bit different here, about 51, 52% African-American, about 38% white. And then some other smaller demographics as they're broken out, as you see. So a little bit different, but again, we know that the demographic we serve and the families and the communities we serve with these two slides, and that is going to tie into a little bit of what I'm going to focus on with our next couple of slides with each one of our employee groups. So I broke out our four groups here. The first is our secretaries. Within our secretary group, we have 14 building secretaries that work across our, primarily front-facing with the the community and a few who work like in the food services area, not so much in front of the students as much, but they're also part of this group. As you can see, I took two school years that we've had. We looked at the 2019-20 data and then we took a snapshot of our current data. This is right from our, you know, our AS400 system, looking at our current staff. So of the 14, we had about the same number of secretaries both years. We had about 20% of our secretaries were diverse backgrounds from African-American in 2019-20. And you can see that that has grown over the last six years to where 35%, so almost 36% of our secretaries are African-American. So again, that's a little closer to reflecting our community that we serve. Still some areas that we can grow and as we continue to have openings when we do, looking to, we're closer to that goal that we have. I also included just in all the slides you'll see, this just another demographic just for us to consider is where we are with our years of service with each one of these groups. So again, not a huge sample size here, but you can see a good chunk of our secretaries, about 10 of them are all within 10 years or less of service to the district. Now, it's still a lot of service. And then we have three that are, three or four that are very much dedicated to the district for many years. I think they're between 22 and 28 years of service, those three. So they're probably getting close to the end of their careers, but the great service they've provided to us. We just wanted to show you that difference. It's fairly, very high on one side in terms of a large group, 10 years or less. And then we have a few at the very top of the seniority list here who have given us many years. Moving to our paraprofessionals, this is our group of staff. We have 58 of them right now that are employed directly with the district that primarily serve in the special ed support functions or in the academic support functions across all of our buildings. As you can see, we have seen also significant increase, a very significant increase here with the diversity of our parapro group. In 2019-20, we only had 19% of our staff were African-Americans supporting our students. That has jumped considerably when you consider both African-American and Hispanic backgrounds to 45-plus percent. So a significant increase of the people who work most directly with our students and support of them on the academic side or on the special ed side. So very nice improvement there. Again, something we'll continue to work on with the parapro's as we hire them. You can see with this slide here, we do have a low level of seniority with this group. As you can see, there was probably a lot of turnover over the years. I've only been here six months, but you can see that 80% of our paraprofessionals have five years or less with the district. So one of the things that we certainly hope with the new parapro contract that you approved was just part of the overall EFE contract, we have a much better pay scale in there. So I'm hoping over time, we're going to be able to retain more of our parapro's so they spend more time with us, build more experience, build some of the experience they had that you saw on the slides there where they were learning in the professional development today and continue to take that experience that they're growing here and that trust that they build with our students that they get to know the same paraprofessionals in the building over and over again that work with them. So that's very important, but hopefully that will continue over time and we can keep growing this, these years of service so we have more people staying with us over time. Our building administrators, again, a small sample size, we only have nine. And I have three pieces of data here. We wanted to compare this to some state-level standards too, so you could see that as well. In 2019-20, only two of our administrators were African-American. That has doubled, two, four of the nine. So again, there has been growth and improvement in that area, but I wanted you to see that, how that compares to the state level. Across our state, which is, you know, is unfortunate that only 11%, almost 12% of administrators across the state are African-American. I pulled data from the National Center for Education Statistics. You'll see the next set of data with teachers that I'll show you in a minute is from Michigan School Data, MI School Data, which is the main data we use. The one from NCES was more direct to principals, so I was trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison. The MI School Data includes building principals and central office administrators in one, so it wasn't an accurate data to use. But I wanted you to see that and then you can see where our administrators are in terms of their seniority with the district. Two-thirds of them have been here five years or less. Again, that's something we also hope to grow. One of the other things we talked about when you approved contracts was really increasing the compensation levels for our administrators. As you probably recall, when we had some of our closed sessions, our administrator contract was among the few lowest paid in the entire county. And we did significantly improve that. So we think over time, that's going to contribute to hopefully retaining more of our administrators. Again, hugely beneficial coming from districts where we tend to keep principals for five or seven or eight years. You see a huge You see a huge difference when you have consistent leadership in buildings. And then last, but certainly not least, our teachers. This is our largest group, of course. Right now, there are 156 district teachers. There's a few openings still. So you can see how things have changed there. In 2019-20, only 10% of our teaching staff was from a diverse background. And you can see the majority were African-American, a small Asian and multirace background as well. This was consistent, if you look all to the far-right side, the MI School Data, about 10% statewide of teachers. Again, somewhat of a concerning statistic, only about 10% teachers statewide are from diverse backgrounds. So we were on par nine years ago, or six years ago, I'm sorry. You can see that there has been a significant change, again, over the last six years with the work that has been done. This is not recent work that has been done. This has been working that Mrs. Gibson and Mrs. Fleming and others have done over the last several years to continue to diversify our staff. But we have moved to about 19% of our total staff are from diverse backgrounds now. And that is very consistent too in terms of who we hired this year. We, you know, we had a large class this year of 32 new teachers. 19% of those teachers were also from diverse backgrounds. So it's very consistent, something that we'll have to continue to work on. And there's some other factors I wanted to show you as well. So you can look at this statistic. I know this slide may be a little hard to see, but I wanted to include a couple of other pieces of data on here. There you go. So I probably should have broken these up into some other slides, so it's a little hard to see. But if you look at the one on the far-left side, the two blue bars, that is the gender of our teachers. We're very consistent with state levels. They're about 75% female, 25% male statewide. We're 76 and 24. So we're right there, very consistent. If you look at the top part chart with the gold bars, that is our age range of our teachers, the age bands. So the 20 to 29, 30 to 39, so we just put them in bands. That one is relatively consistent, a pretty even spread. The one thing I wanted you to consider for that is if you look at the top two age bands, the 50 to 59 and the 60 to 69, that's the group of teachers you probably could assume might be looking to retire in the next couple of years. Because with the state retirement plans, most teachers retire in that range. Some, if they buy their years under the old plans, they could have retired in their late 40s. But that's the group you would consider probably would be the ones looking to retire over the next few years. And then the bottom one with the green chart, that is the years of service with our teachers. As you can see, this also highlights some of the turnover that we've had. So we have a good chunk, about, is it 85% of our teachers have been here for 10 years or less. We do have that opposite side. We have some very senior teachers in the district too, but I know predates me, of course. I know you dealt with a lot of turnover here. Something we hope to stop and hope to slow that down quite a bit. So we see that large group of teachers in that range as well too. And when you tie some of these together in the gold barred chart above that and then toward the top of this chart, when you see people with 26 years and above, that's your group of people that you likely to see some turnover because they're going to be able to retire with those years. Now, it's not an automatic correlation there because we have hired teachers who have had many years of teaching in public schools prior to coming to us, so maybe than their last five or six years here. So they may fit in that older age band, but they don't have many years of service with us. But they may have 25 somewhere else. So they may also look to retire, but not a strict correlation. We just wanted you to consider that as well. Again, you also did some wonderful things approving the new teacher pay scales with our teachers as well too. So we hope that will also help with our retention and attracting future teachers. And as we see the healthy turnover that districts should have, not the stuff that you've been dealing with in the last several years here, hopefully we can continue to work to replace our teachers and look to continue to identify teachers from diverse backgrounds to more reflect the community here that we serve. So just in summary, you can see that there's been increases in each one of our major, our four employee groups there over the last six years. And when you compare it to state levels, you know, our administrators are 44% of our administrators now versus 11% statewide. And teachers are 19.2% with diverse backgrounds compared to 10% statewide, or 10 or 11%. So we're heading in the right direction. And of course, it's not an end goal. It's a continuous goal that we have to continue to find the best teachers we can and also teachers that reflect the community here. And then just one other thing that I wanted to bring up tied to all this is just how we continue to staff and work on the retention of our teachers in order to meet that strategic plan goal. We will and we have been working on, when we have openings, posting them on a very wide range of areas, using a lot of the major websites, the Indeed, the Handshakes, Michigan Works, the MI Staff Job Boards, or the job boards that exist on some of the professional societies. So Michigan Association of School Administrators, Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, those types of things. It's a common job board that goes across all of those professional platforms. So it's shared with, across the state and all, across the areas you may look. Places like MSBO, the Michigan School Business Officials Organization, where you may put, like the jobs we recently had open in the business office, you direct the mayor. There's ones for music and other areas as well too. So focusing those as well, but also going broadly to make sure we get the best candidates we can. Using social media, I've been working with Caitlin. She's a whiz at this, using our social media platform for the district. And she's also able to do targeted sponsored posts. So we spent, I think, maybe only $300 over the summer for her to have targeted sponsored posts go to areas that we know that we're trying to identify candidates from that area. For example, we knew that certain districts were laying off. So she was able to use targeted sponsored posts to hit some of those areas like Lance Cruz area, like Wayne Westland, some other ones that we knew they were losing some teachers. So we were hoping to get more social media clicks from people finding our jobs in those areas because she's able to push it out into those areas more. So being very creative of how we get those posts out so a wide range of candidates from all backgrounds can see those. And we also, in the past, I think there's been job fairs here. I've done them in other districts. It's something we also should look at as well here too going forward. When we do have candidates that we have openings and candidates have come through, we still, many of you know Fran Hobbs, who's been with the district many years. She's still, like many people in education, they never really retire. They just keep coming back in different roles. But Fran continues to do initial screening of all candidates for us. So we have an upfront touch base with all candidates. And then she recommends the candidates that meet the qualifications we're looking for. And she and I have weekly meetings, so we talk about the types of candidates and making sure we have a good, strong, diverse set of screen candidates going to our principals for openings. And then our principals know through some work I've done with them and the hiring processes that we've put in place that they are expected to interview a diverse set of candidates whenever we have the possibility. Every once in a while, you just only have one or two candidates. They're qualified. They may not meet the diversity expectations we have, but we certainly want to make sure we get teachers in front of students. But we also want to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity who is qualified for positions. Likewise, we want to make sure our interview committees, when we have them, also represent the diversity of our schools. It is a challenge when you have diverse candidates come in front of interview committees that don't look like them. So it's something I've also asked administrators to do is as you have interview committees gathered, make sure we have a representation of what our district looks like in front of candidates. It is a lot easier and they don't feel as intimidated of coming in front of people who may not understand or look like them. So it's something that they have worked to do and then we're continuing to doing. As you heard from some of the supports and resources that we have in place here and in previous presentations from Lisa and others, we have a lot of support we give to teachers regardless of who you are when you come in here. Teachers have mentors, they have professional development, they have coaches available to them through Michigan State and through the MIST and just ongoing support from the district, from the principals. So that's across the board. We have to support everyone who comes in here because we don't want to lose teachers. Teaching is hard and we want to make sure we provide as much support as possible to keep the chance of them leaving out of not feeling supported. We want people to stay here and be feel supported so they feel they are successful and that helps our students. And then lastly, I want to look at, I don't know, I know it's been done in the past here, but I want to restart using exit interviews and exit surveys for everybody who leaves here. It's important to find out why people leave. And that's not just for people who resign, it's also for our retirees. Because our retirees can give us a wealth of information of what's going well, how they see things have changed, suggestions that they have with their experience, what they would like to see going on in the future. And then even someone who may decide this is not a good fit for them, it's good to find out why. And that, as you gather that data, plus with all the data that Caitlin puts together with some of the engagement surveys she puts out, using that combined data to try to identify trends of why people may be leaving the district. And then you can identify and address those trends and hopefully fix those to help slow down any, you know, drivers of turnover that we may have. So, you know, these are broader topics that we could go into much, much more in-depth, but I wanted to provide that information to you and just some thoughts I had about this. And then we certainly can provide updates in the future.
I have a quick question there. Did you pick me?
I did. Go ahead, you pick yourself.
I didn't want to get in front of you there. Beautiful presentation. Beautiful. I loved that whole snapshot. But what I didn't see, and I'm just asking a question, you may have already been in there. The special ed piece, is that factored in to the whole report? And how are we, are we strong in that area? Are we still trying to hire? And are we in compliance to a lot of things that may deemed out of compliance?
In terms of special ed?
In terms of, yeah, staffing.
I didn't break it down, Gen Ed to special ed. We certainly can get that data for you and provide an updated presentation. We do, we have hired more in-person, well, employed special ed staff. We, as you know, we've had to use agency hiring for many years here because we've been unable to fill the special ed positions with district paid staff. We were able to hire a few more this year largely because of that improved pay scale. One of the things I, Mrs. Gibson will tell you when I came in and identified where our pay scale was, that we weren't going to be able to hire experienced special ed teachers because many of the programs, particularly for speech, social workers, like their 45 or 60 credit masters programs and when other districts have MA 30 scales plus other things that can pay in the 90s or more experienced teachers. And we weren't able to do that. So that was probably keeping us from hiring some of those types of staff. We are in a much improved position right now. And that's, I think, why we were able to get a few more, that we were able to hire directly as staff here. Mrs. Rush, our Director of Student Services, has been able to fill the positions that we aren't able to fill from direct hires through Emergus and the other companies that we use. But we continually will leave those special ed openings posted. So in case we do find people, we can bring them in, hire them in the district, and then we can remove the special ed, third-party staff from working here. So it is something we'll continue to work on. And my personal goal is to see a lot more of our special ed staff directly employed by the district.
Great job. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Dean, thank you so very much for the information. It was, I've been here for a while and that's what I've been asking for. And I thank you so, so, so much for it. I only have a couple of questions. I'm going to, when you said this is the entire Michigan, is that a certain part of Michigan or is that all of Michigan?
I use statewide data. These sites allow you to use statewide data. You can check down the counties and school districts and everything. I just used the broad statewide data to show what we deal with statewide, essentially what's the pool of all candidates statewide that we deal with. And as you can see, some of the areas in our state across the, you know, obviously we have areas of the state that are not very diverse, but we have, you know, some of our larger cities and other areas that are. And it is very telling when you have that many teachers that we have so few people from diverse backgrounds in some of these roles. So I just tried to use it as a comparison that broadly against statewide data, we're doing pretty well. Doesn't mean we're done. We have to keep, keep moving in the goal that we're, you know, toward the goals that we have.
Right. Because that was the only part. I had a question is when you did the statewide, I was wondering about that. And another question is, will this information be available for us, the board or the public?
I can put it in your, it already is available to the public because this meeting is a public meeting. But I'll happily put the presentation in the board update so that you have it.
Okay. Because on the, on the page for East Point, it was, I had never seen it. They, I looked all over for it. So that's the reason why I'm asking.
Yeah. And we have, so this is a public endeavor, so we're sharing it publicly here. We also have a key performance indicator as part of Goal Area Three. And so it might be, it will be reflected in that scorecard as well. But I'm happy to give you this presentation and the board update.
Okay. Appreciate it. And for that, I truly, truly thank you so much. Since you've been here, it's seemed like you've been on the ball. And I want to thank you because you really are answering most of my questions that I have. And I thank you so much for this information.
My pleasure.
And if I have another question, I'll catch you on the side.
Yeah. Just wanted to reiterate some of the other trustees' comments. Thank you for the information. It was very comprehensive and just interesting to see the shifts that happen to make sure our staff are reflective of the community that we're serving. So I love the idea of a job fair, first of all. So I just wanted to reiterate that as well. So if there's some way that we can collaborate on that, that would be super cool. One other thing in terms of the vacancy piece that you were mentioning for some of our teachers that will be retiring here in the near future. I know you touched on that a little bit, but one thing I was wondering is if we were looking from like a CTE perspective on potentially restarting our teacher program?
So we, there is a process for approval of career tech education programs. And this year of year three of our strategic plan is our big push on secondary programs and instruction. We have a number of courses that are working for us. And we also have a wish list of courses that we'd like to have added. But we're beginning that process now of reexamining the courses that we're offering, what districts we can collaborate with to give opportunities to students that we aren't able to provide, as well as what are those next courses that we want to get. So in the works. Trustee McCain in the works. Thank you so much to Mr. Neforos. I appreciate your update here this evening. I'm sorry, was there another question? I apologize. Trustee McCain and, trustee Chapa, sorry.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to ask about the diversity of the applicants. Does that match the diversity of our hires?
I would have to look at the data more closely on our applicants. I don't, I can't speak to that right now. And we do, I've seen the applicant pools and they are diverse pools. I don't know how the exact number, I don't have the exact number to compare it to what we're actually hiring against. So I would have to try to identify that through our system.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good question. I'm sitting here after overseeing the HR department for a number of years. I'm sitting here thinking if there's a way to get that data out of our hiring system. Thank you so much, Dean, for sharing some of that data with the board this evening. We appreciate that you were able to compile that. It has been a question of the board. It's also a nice celebration of our principals and a lot of the work that has been happening across the district. As part of that, I'd like to share that beautiful East Point High School is going to be hosting AFT National President Randy Weingarten. We will be hosting a Public Education Town Hall next Monday night, 6 o'clock to 7:30 PM, with a number of leaders from across the country coming and showing up here in our fine Michigan Region 10. So I hope the Board of Education would consider coming to support that event. There will be, I will be welcoming the audience. Then we'll have a panel. And then Randy will speak to the crowd. So it's a great opportunity to celebrate public education and a great partnership between AFT and East Point Community Schools. You must RSVP to attend. So please, I will send this out to the board and to the district at large. But you do have to scan that QR code and register to attend. There is limited seating and only folks who have pre-registered will be allowed to enter. So if you are interested, please pre-register. And we'd love to see you next Monday evening, 6:00 PM, at the Public Education Town Hall. At the high school. Excuse me? There is no fee to attend. It is open to the public. The city of East Point is working on a master plan. And I'm sharing this this evening because the city and the school district have to work in tandem to make a great city and a great community. And I wanted to share out that there will be two interactive open houses and formally invite any employees, resident leaders in the district to please consider attending. They will be at the LFA Hall, which is, you know, very close here on Tuesday, September 23rd, and Wednesday, September 24th, 5 to 7 and 6 to 8 respectively. We'd love to see some of our education community out and giving their input on how we can build a city together. It's very easy to tear down work. It's much harder to work together and to celebrate success together success together to achieve a vision and improve our economic development and our small businesses and community here together. And the school district supports the City of East Point as we continue to grow in service together. Upcoming events, as I mentioned before, this Friday is our first football game versus Sterling Heights. I do expect to see Superintendent John Bernia in the house from Warren Consolidated. They're very optimistic that they can win this game. October 9th, parent-teacher conferences will be a half-day for students. Also on the 9th, we have the Gleaners Mobile Food Distribution, 9:30 AM at East Point Middle School. That concludes the lengthy superintendent's report and I'd like to thank all of my team for contributing this evening, sharing more about, yeah, they do deserve a round of applause. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we have our first hearing of the public for agenda items only. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard? No? Anybody? Nobody? All right, we'll open and close at 7:18. Next, we have our discussion item for technology. We have a change order for our district's security cameras. Mr. Latham, we're happy to see you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you recall, a few months ago, you approved the purchase of new camera surveillance systems for the elementary schools, your learning center, the operations building. And I explained that at that time, we were going to do this in two phases. This is the change order to begin Phase 2.
Yeah, it's the mic. It's something.
Which includes...
Really? Now, you need, you gotta go back over there.
The technology guy to not turn on the microphone. So this is the change order to include the high school and the middle school as Phase 2 of this project. The pricing that is contained in these documents is the same pricing that was in Phase 1. We were able to secure that by the way we did the bid, so that's why we're handling it as a scope change to increase the scope at the existing pricing. So there's, there's two portions in here. The low voltage cabling, I'm recommending we continue with grit, which is $78,529.6. The replacement of the security cameras, which is $368,608.24 and a project contingency of $45,000 for a Phase 2, total of $492,137.30.
The changeovers for the schools and reducing the buildings, they, these will be able to be removed?
Yes, well, yep.
Okay, because if we don't want to buy them and then we got to leave them there with the building.
Configuration of the buildings will be able to reuse cameras, readjust. If we, if we happen to find some area that needs additional coverage, you know, the cameras would be able to be...
Oh, okay, okay.
And I will say that up until this point, with the existing camera system that was just recently put in, you are in night and day difference. You are going from watching Gilligan's Island in black and white to high-definition Survivor.
Wonderful. And the video, stay on file for how long?
The videos stay out, well, record retention is 30 days. So the, the videos have to stay at least 30 days depending on how much video is being captured. It may be the latest and in greatest state of the art. Now, somebody I'm sure 10, you know, five months from now is going to come up with this. Yes, this is currently the top-of-the-line technology as far as video capture and compression.
And Trustee McCain, building on that question, one of the questions our team asked was, can we move that technology later? We do have a long-term facilities plan to consolidate campuses and yes, we can move components of that if we choose to later.
All right, can I please have a motion to approve the change order for the district's security cameras?
So moved. Support.
Okay, with a motion support, can I please have the vote?
Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Dr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopper?
Yes.
And Mrs. Whitby?
Yes.
Okay, with a vote of 7-0, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Danny Antin.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Next, we have our second hearing of the public. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard? Anybody wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, 3 minutes.
Good evening, Mary Hall Rayford, East Point. Really glad to see a forward move working with the city because I've always felt that if the city grows, it's going to be contingent upon how well the school system works. This is the main thing that people look for when they're looking to move into a city. And since our primary revenue is peak tax dollars from people moving in, hopefully in homeownership, it's hard to build a city if we don't have a viable school district. And I've always felt that someone from the board should always have been involved and integrated in what's going on in City Hall. There are things that come up at almost every council meeting that should have some input or someone should be there reporting back to the board as to what's being done and what's going on. I'm on the planning commission now and so I encourage everyone who can get out to the focus groups this week to be there. It's extremely important for people to take the time to have their input heard rather than just the complaints. So, and I've seen a lot of complaints on social media regarding a lot of things, especially your special ed program. So just one note of interest on that one. General ed teachers, for the most part, are not trained in the same way as special needs teachers. And I know because I was part of that training. So we can't just stick a child with special needs into any classroom. They must be in the classroom with a teacher who knows how to address their issues. That's extremely important. And from what I've seen, there are some parents who are not happy. And for those who are listening, I want to encourage you to bring your concerns to the school board. I don't mind getting the messages, but it's kind of irrelevant for me to express your concerns if you're not here. So I want parents to show up. Bring your concerns here and air them to the authority that can do something about it. Thank you.
Next, we have trustee comments. Do you want to talk about the legislative?
Oh, yes. I just want to say the entire board just about went to the legislative meeting and it was a lot of the norms of how money has been spent coming from the state and the federal, but it was mentioned to us to make sure that we talk with the parents to get them to start writing, talking to the administrators and the legislators and everything because as of now, there is no budget and there won't be any, after the 1st, our time limit is October the 1st and if there's nothing by then, maybe we can go a week or two, maybe, but after that, it's up in the air. So please, we are encouraging all of our constituents and our teachers and our people in East Point to start calling because without the funds, we won't be able to do any of the things that we have set out to do and planned to do. So right now, everything is on hold. So we asking all of the parents and everyone, not just parents, but if you're in the district, please start writing and calling so that we would make sure we have enough funds. Thank you for that opportunity.
Good evening, fellow board members and everyone out there. Lots of positive things happening in the district. I'm really encouraged to see all the upcoming athletic events, the new elementary mascot process and very happy also to see that we'll continue free lunch. It was great to hear from the administrative team today, so keep up the great work that you all are doing. I really enjoyed, if you haven't seen on social media, the Teacher of the Year videos. If they don't make you at least tear up a little bit, I, I don't know. So just wanted to offer congratulations again to our amazing educators being recognized for their important work inspiring the youngest generation in our community. Also super excited for the Public Education Town Hall. I got a text about that right before, so should be a great conversation. I would encourage everyone to come out for that as well, as well as thanks to Superintendent Gibson for uplifting the two open houses the city has this week. These are opportunities to share your insight to guide the rewriting of our city's master plan and the creation of an economic development strategy. So at this time, all schools should have copies of the flyers and the information is on social media as well. And as always, I will close with a quote. If you all have ever had the pleasure of visiting the great city of Chicago, the way, the reason that the city is a great city as it is today is largely attributed to architect and urban planner Daniel Burnham and this quote is from him. "Make no little plans. They have no magic to stir men's blood and probably themselves will not be realized. Make big plans. Aim high in hope and work, remembering that a noble logical diagram once recorded will never die, but long after we are gone will be a living thing asserting itself with ever-growing insistency. Remember that our sons and grandsons are going to do things that would stagger us. Let your watchword be your order and your beacon beauty. Think big." Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Mrs. Trump?
I just want to remind students, parents, teachers and youth leaders that the VFW scholarship deadline is October 31st. Please reach out to your local VFW hall for more information or to submit your entry and thank you all for all of your information tonight.
Mr. Roscoe?
I'll piggyback off a Chopper there. Great presentations all day, all night from technical as well as dean.
The deans.
The deans, yeah. And Stephanie, that's what I'm trying to get out. You know I was trying to get, I was trying to get Stephanie's name out. Just, just a great job. I just love this, having an opportunity to serve on this wonderful board as well as to serve this wonderful administration. Madam President, you too.
I'm going to say thank you.
And it's happy fall, children, just look out for our babies. They playing, they enjoying the colors, just look out for them, don't hit them, just guide them. And good night.
Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
I want to piggyback off of trustee Richardson here. We need a budget by October 1st and the uncertainty is hurting our students. Staff cannot plan staffing, class sizes, transportation or essential services. We need to send a clear message to Lansing. Contact the state rep, the state senator, the governor and demand action pronto. Also, very happy and congratulations to all the teachers of the year. That was really nice. The videos were really nice.
I didn't see that.
Yep. And thanks administrative board, you are very knowledgeable and I look forward to the big reveal for the mascot.
Mr. Williams?
Did they pick the mascot?
Mr. Williams?
No. Thank you, Madam President, thank you board and thank you community. I was just like to piggyback off of the trustees up here. We do need a resolution on our budget and we needed yesterday. If you think, if you think of, if you think of the budget, think of, think about all the things that it does to afford our children, what they need, not what, not what we want to give them, but what they need to get the best education that they can possibly get. It's up to us as administrators, staff, legislation to see that that happens. So parents, we're encouraging you to write letters, make phone calls, do everything that we can as a community and the school district to get the word out that we need this settled and we don't need the government to close down. We definitely need them to stay open so we can continue to serve our students and our community. And go Shamrocks, we're going to beat Sterling Heights. I'm going to make it my business to try to show up to that Friday football game and if I have to coach, put me in, you know? Be ready, be ready, willing and able.
We'll see you at the coaches field.
But my buddy Aaron, I'm sure he's going to do a great job. And I'm excited about the, the direction that the district and the schools are going in and, and everything has been looking up. If you haven't come out and taken a recent look at our school district, please come out and visit the schools. Go on, you know, come on the inside and look and see what's going on. We have done a lot in this district to make it a community district as well as our children's district. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. And finally, I just want to say thank you so much to the whole team, Danny, you and your group always make sure that we have the latest technology and the things that we need in this district to help improve our students and the ability for them to have a safe environment. To the central office, central office, thank you. You didn't have to do that report and dig as deep as you did, but we appreciate that to let the community know that we're doing the best that we can with, for our children with what we have and it's, it's a lot is going on and we hear so much out here and so we appreciate that you took the time to do that. Also, make sure, I would like to tell all of our parents and, and in the district, please go to the chain of command. If you have a problem, don't sit and be settled and be like, oh, it'll be all right or it's not all right or whatever. Go see those principals, go see the central office, go see the superintendent because at the end of the day, the board here, we hire the superintendent to have a staff to take care of your problems. Our goal is to hire the people that can help you and so we want you to go and see them. Don't sit by. If you're contacting your community members, don't do that. Contact the people that can help you. Contact those principals in those buildings, the administration. If you need the restorative justice, if you need to see somebody from the liaison, contact those people because they can help you. Come and tell us, we're going to say thank you so much, go see administration. So see them first before you come see us, then we can try to get some fire under the pot. There you go, right? And I don't, you know, metaphors is not my thing. Thank you so much, we appreciate you so much, y'all. Have a good night, immediate adjournments, 7:35.